This time I'd like to call the Public Schools of Robinson County Board Education Meeting for January 14, 2025 to order. Mr. Vontae, our chairman is going to be here in just a second, but I figured he'd go ahead and get this thing rolling. At this time, let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. Next up, we have the Long Branch Songbirds doing our Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alexander Floyd, 4th grade.
Ada McCray, 12th grade.
Skylar Shockley, 3rd grade.
Faith McMillan, 4th grade.
Chloe Graham, 3rd grade.
Janet Meyer, music teacher and choir director.
Thank you, Long Branch, and thank you, Dr. Harris, as well.
Thank you, Mr. Trey. Sorry about being late. Had a personal matter I had to deal with. The adoption of the agenda. A motion made by Mr. John Simmons, a sequel made by Mr. Craig Lowry. All in favor? All opposed? Approval of open session minutes? A motion being made by Ms. Melissa Ocean, a sequel being made by Mr. Henry Brewer. All in favor? Our information items. School Board Appreciation Month by Dr. Freddie Williamson and Ms. Jessica Seale.
Mr. Chairman and Board Members, as you are aware, January is School Board Appreciation Month. I say to you, we appreciate you every single day. The work that you do is just critical. Unless we can do the work in these meetings with your approval, then the work will not happen in our buildings for our kids. So, we never take you for granted, and we appreciate all that you do. At 7:15 this morning, Patty Mitchell walked with Patty. Patty walked into my office at 7:15. Patty, come up here and tell this board members what you were talking to me about and what you said at 7:15 this morning.
I told him that I appreciate working with this board. I often talk about y'all, I mean, a lot. You know, I've been here 41 years, and my goal was to work in the superintendent's office. And I'm telling you, they don't want you to talk about God, but I thank God every day for being allowed to have such a great board. You might disagree, but to come together, again, that's what you do. One team, one goal, and I appreciate each one of you.
Thank you.
Really, Patty, you said we have a great board, is what you asked, and we do, and we do. Let me ask Ms. Jennifer Freeman, Jennifer, if you'll come up and address our board and what they do, please.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and Board Members. I too would like to echo Patty's comments. I've had the privilege of working now with Robinson County for over 30-plus years. I'm at my 43rd year in education, and I want to say that I really deeply appreciate you each and every day. I have a personal experience with each of you. I've got to know each of you, some of you more personal than others. But I want to say that we appreciate everything that you do. But the one thing that I often want to encourage and continue to encourage and know that you do this is I hear often, because with 43 years, you know what I'm listening for, are we here for the children? Are we here for the students? Do we have the best interest of them at heart? And I can truly say that I've had personal conversations with each of you from time to time over my tenure here, which is almost seven years in June. And each of you have always mentioned at some point in a conversation with you, you have mentioned that to me. And that is near and dear to me. That is also near and dear to our faculty, our staff, and our students and our community. I want to thank you from the deepest part of my heart for what you do. I remember looking at many boards across the years, and I remember what Patty just saw and said. I remember seeing the back-and-forth conversations. But ultimately, what I have to do is applaud you because you've had those back-and-forth conversations, but you always come to that one team, one goal, and one accord. And I want to just say that God has richly blessed us to have a great board, and I thank you for everything that you do.
And Amanda, will you come and address the board? You're one of our principal coaches, and you're having conversation with principals, and their conversation in appreciation to this board. Principals really appreciate the opportunity to run those buildings. And that is our job and responsibility to trust them to do that work, and they're doing exceptionally well. But again, it doesn't only happen without policies in place, without your support on some tough issues, and we appreciate that. Never take that for granted. This is my fourth school district that I've had a pleasure over 40-some years in this business. And I will be honest, the best work in my career is happening in the Public Schools of Robinson County now. And it's been a long journey, but it is just exciting what's happening and some of our outcomes and the foundation that is in place that it will sustain itself. When we started the journey, that was part of our goal, is how do we do this work in such a way that it will sustain itself? It becomes the norm, and we're on our way to doing that.
Good evening. Thank you. I want to, of course, thank all of you for your duties and what you do for each and every one of our schools and our leaders in our buildings, and I want you to know that the work that we do together doesn't go unnoticed. The work that we've started this summer, we've already circled back to that, looking at data again, and we are just super excited about where our schools are right now and the conversations that we're able to have inside every one of our buildings. And we know that only that's possible through our supports and things that we put in place. And a part of that really and truly does include each and every one of you and you all being able to support us in our work. And we're just thankful for that and thankful that each of you are able to come together and be there for us. So, thank you.
Dr. Barton, if you'll come and address the board, please.
Yes. Chairman Leach, Board Members, good evening. It's been a pleasure over my 13 years in administration to have the opportunity to work with such a group of people that have a different perspective than we do. Y'all are one of the first faces of the public, so I'm sure when people need help or they have ideas or feedback, I hope they can come to Fairmont High School and feel comfortable sharing that with me. But sometimes they want to talk with somebody in the community, someone that's been elected to be their constituent, someone that can listen to them or come to their home or go to their home. And so, I think that's a lot of things that we, as employees, may not get to see, the work that y'all do. So, I'm appreciative of that. I got a great board member. I had the opportunity to work with Mr. Craig, Dr. Emanuel, at other schools, and a lot of y'all, so I appreciate what you do. I know it's not for the money. It's for the children, and we need folks that are going to represent parents' values and what they want and what they think is best for their children. So, on behalf of principals everywhere, thank you.
Jessica?
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Board Members. Just want to say thank you for all that you do for us. Everything that you do to move the district forward is greatly appreciated. We know you make hard decisions and you show up every day with a good attitude, and you always answer the phone. And we just so, we appreciate you so much. Got a little token of thank you, of thanks, at your table today. So, happy Board Appreciation Month, and we appreciate you.
All right, if you'll come front and center, as they say down home, we got a little something, something for you.
Okay, and I will call the names in no particular order. So, Mr. Henry Brewer. Mr. Trey Britt. Dr. Lena Emanuel. Ms. Kristy D. Fields. Mr. Vontae Leach. Mr. Terry Locklear. Mr. Craig Lowry. Ms. Crystal Monroe. Ms. Melissa Ocean. Mr. Bradley Phillips. Mr. John Simmons. And I have the pleasure of holding the cameras, so I'm going to take a picture of you guys if you'll group together for me.
Once again, join me in saying thank you to our board members, and again, we appreciate you so very much. Join me again and give them a round of applause, please.
Now, I have 2025 NCA SA Legislative and Policy Priorities by Dr. Freddie Williamson.
Again, Mr. Chair and Members, we have placed at your site the final legislative priorities as put together by NCA SA North Carolina Association for School Administrators. The intent is that this will become part of the legislative agenda. I am only sharing it with you tonight as information. Our hope is that when we come back together in a board work session, we'll have some conversation around these priorities as they align with our priorities for this year. So, again, just for information tonight. Thank you.
Hold on, we got a question about Mr. Craig.
Dr. Williamson, again, would it be included at that time? I know it's probably not in here, but the Title I update we got as far as where we're at with that changing and everything, would that be included then? And also, the NIL information we had, can all that be included at that time?
Yes, because we're just introducing tonight's short conversations. But our intent and that we would spend a four-day or two-half days and go into detail and introduce things like cell phone use, what kind of policy do we need. So, yes, that's a question.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we will have our Robinson Community College request for Green Grove. No, I'm sorry, I skipped, oh, I'm sorry. North Carolina Governor's Page by Dr. Connie Locklear. I'm sorry.
Chairman Leach, Superintendent Williamson, Board Members, thank you. Actually, that would have been okay, Chairman Leach, because I have several students that are on their way from basketball practice. But we'll go ahead and proceed. Thank you tonight for allowing us to recognize our students. The North Carolina Governor's Page, the American Indian Student Leaders Week, was November 18 through 21st. Founded in 1973, the Governor's Page program gives high school students from all over North Carolina the opportunity to come to Raleigh for a week of hands-on participation in their state government. Pages grow in four areas: history, civics, service, and professional development. This Page Week is for North Carolina students who identify as American Indian and who are interested to learn from American Indian leaders in state government. This year, we had seven students. We had five, seven students that were selected, and we had five students that attended. Our first student is Ms. Ellery Barton. She is a junior at Purnell Sweat High School. She plans to attend UNC Wilmington and earn her master's degree in criminal justice and become a homicide detective. She is a member of the Beta Club and the National Honor Society. She actively participates in the JROTC and Battle of the Books, BAN, Bowling, SGA, and CCP classes, college and career courses. Ellery says she enjoyed meeting our leaders, who are in charge of making this state run smoothly, as well as meeting new people and making new friends. Ellery, will you come forward, please?
Let me ask board members to do comment, too.
And Ellery's father is here. He's also principal at Fairmont High, but tonight he's here as a father also, Mr. Andrew Barton. We got a camera in front of us, I can't be blocked. Come on, come on. I was trying to get out of the way. Thank you. Our next student that is with us tonight is Ms. Arista Lowry. Arista is a senior at St. Paul's High School. She has a 3.8 unweighted GPA and serves as president of the ACES Club. She organized and held the first annual Being Their Voice Rally for missing and murdered Indigenous women. She is an active actress with Purple Door Productions in Lummerton, a member of the Beta Club, and an active member of NNAO. Arista says she enjoyed being able to meet new people, network, and learn about how our state government works in a hands-on, interesting way. Ms. Arista, will you come forward with your mom, please? Okay, she's in the 10th grade, that's the same. Okay, she's in the 10th grade. These students are not with us tonight, but I would still like to take the time to recognize them. Mr. Roger Dees is a senior at Fairmont High School and is currently ranked number one in his class with a GPA of 4.51. He is a member of the Beta Club and National Honor Society. Roger plays varsity baseball and cross country at Fairmont High School and serves as the president of the ACES Club. Roger said he enjoyed meeting new people, getting to see different parts of the government, and getting to meet Governor Rory Cooper. He is a student that was at basketball practice and is on his way, so hopefully he'll come in before I finish reading. Our next student is Minkota Smith. He is a senior at Fairmont High School, has a 3.87 GPA. He is also part of the cross country and varsity baseball team. He recently committed to Robinson Community College to play baseball. Minkota is also part of the Beta Club and National Honor Society and an active member of the ACES Club. Minkota said he enjoyed meeting those in authority and learning about their roles in the North Carolina government, the hidden and ancient records and archives, but his favorite part was riding scooters to everywhere they went. Lastly, he enjoyed meeting people and seeing Native people in leadership, and he learned a lot from the program. Our last student is Jordan Hunt. Jordan is a junior at Fairmont High School and is currently taking four college classes with a 3.8 unweighted GPA. She is a member of the Beta Club and the National Honor Society. She is the current president of Robinson County Teen Democrats and part of the Robinson STEM Ambassadors. She is also a previous member of the North Carolina Child Youth Advocacy Council. Jordan says she enjoyed meeting Governor Cooper, as well as Secretary Caswell, and the opportunity to learn from their peers from across the state. I would like to thank all of you for recognizing our students tonight, and I would also like to give a shout-out to Secretary Caswell, who was very instrumental in ensuring and helping us find housing for our students. So, I really appreciate all the work that she did to help us with this program and all of those in government and our students. And I also would be remiss if I did not recognize our WDS of Fairmont High School, Ms. Sally Otson at the back. Would you please stand? And thankful for all of our students. We had another student from Fairmont High School that was accepted and a student from Lummerton, and both of those at the last minute decided not to go. So, we're very pleased with what they've done. Thank you, Board Members, again, Chairman Leach and Dr. Williamson, for allowing us to share.
And Dr. Locklear, we thank you for your work and for your leadership. So, thank you.
Next, we have RCC requests for Green Grove. Dr. Freddie Williamson?
Mr. Chair and Members, you have at your site a letter from President Singler in terms of transferring the Green Grove elementary school property. As you are aware, you do have a 10-year lease agreement with the college at this point. The letter states that they have completed Phase 1 and 2 of the environmental site assessments and have obtained certification from the state of North Carolina and the secretary to the council of state authorizing them to proceed and to make the request of the transfer of that policy under General Statute 1, and we place that at your site, General Statute 160A-274, for your information. We're all aware of the growth of their law enforcement program, in particular, the beginning law enforcement program, and that is their intent to expand that program at that particular site. Again, tonight, as information, in closed session, Alex, we would talk about that process, correct? In terms of that next step, what you as the board must do and declare if it is your intent to transfer that property.
Yes, yeah, we can go through the legal procedures for that process.
Great. Okay, for information tonight, and once we complete that process, we will bring it back for action. Any questions or concern at this point with the request?
Dr. Emanuel, are you turning off? Yes.
Is this for everyone ever? I know when we did towns and transferred, there was a little quirk and therefore we had to maintain da-da-da-da, so we do not have to maintain the building at no place. We are transferring the maintenance, the titleship and everything to RCC.
That is my understanding and the intent. It becomes their property to upkeep and maintain.
Thank you.
We do have two mobile units on that site. Bobby, you've assessed those. We're going to need one, come talk about that for a minute at the site for additional classroom space, please.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Board Members, and again, thank you for being such a wonderful group to work with. Just want to share with you, immediately prior to Green Grove closing, we placed additional mobile units out at that site. A couple of those mobile units were used for classrooms, other were used for office spaces. So, it is our intent that if we transfer the property over to RCC, that we maintain ownership of the one double-wide mobile unit that would allow us additional classroom space if we need to move that to a school. But again, the office space would stay there because it would be no need for those units to move anywhere else.
Mr. Craig?
Understanding, Dr. Williamson, this is a transfer totally to RCC of this property.
That's correct. The general statute allows that to happen.
Okay, my question is if, and not knowing what's going to happen in 10 years, but let's say 10 or 15 years down the road, for some reason, we see, okay, we need this for something else. Could it come back to us then, or what would be a process for that to even happen? Not saying we would ever need it, but if that would occur, what would be the process?
And I think that's one of the questions that we can answer in close, as we talk about transferring property.
Okay, thank you.
And other questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Williamson.
Thank you.
Next, we will have child and adult care food program by Ms. Jennifer Hannah.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Williamson, and Board Members. As part of our yearly requirement, I am here to discuss the Shining Stars Food Program. Shining Stars facilities operate their food program through the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and the Child and Adult Care Food Program. The Child and Adult Care Food Program, otherwise known as CACFP, is federally funded, is a federally funded program that is administered and funded by the United States Department of Agriculture and Food and Nutrition Services. The purpose of the program is to ensure that eligible children and adults who attend qualifying non-residential care facilities receive nutritious meals. The CACFP meal patterns ensure that infants, children, and adults at participating centers have access to healthy food throughout the day. CACFP meals and snacks include whole grains, a variety of vegetables and fruits, with less added sugar and saturated fat. Our staff works diligently to ensure healthy and nutritional meals that vary with the seasons and the cultures that represent our students. This year, Shining Stars renewed our application for 214 participants. With that enrollment, we were awarded an estimated $247,173.54. This award total can vary with the fluctuation of students' enrollment throughout the year. The total breaks down to 149 students eligible for free meals, 26 students eligible for reduced meals, and 39 students who were denied eligibility. All students who were denied eligibility are covered under our local funds from NC pre-K. This grant helps to support our cafeteria staff salaries and our students' meals throughout the 24 and 25 school year. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
All right, Dr. Emanuel?
Emma?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah, I know you said it's subsidized with NC preschool. Now, is it totally solid? In other words, you have enough money to maintain staff, make sure staff buy the food that you have to buy or whatever? So, you're not in the hole, in it all with the monies, because paying staff is expensive?
Yes, ma'am. So, the food program is developed to only cover a certain portion of cost. When we do the grant, we also look at other funding sources that bring in, that we bring in through the program, like our developmental day grants, the NC pre-K grants, local funding, and they take that and use a scale to determine how much we will be approved for. So, it doesn't cover total cost, but it covers majority.
So, I guess my question is, will the school system have to pick up any slack? Or have they had to pick up any slack? And I know in the past, past 100 years ago, they didn't. But have they had to pick up any slack in the air command for this the last few years?
No, ma'am. So everything that is not covered through the CACFP grant is able to be covered through NC pre-K and local funds.
And you mentioned the fact that some of the children didn't qualify, but they're, and I want to make sure that this is my understanding. Some do not qualify. You said thirty-some or something, something, something. But there are other funds that can pay their food, or do they have to pay for their food?
No, everything is free for our children that attend our schools. We cover that cost through NC pre-K and local funds.
All right, make sure they got their food free as well, because the school system, everyone gets to eat free.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that, those are my questions. Now, do you have to move this to an approved item eventually?
No, sir. No, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Oh, you just?
We're just, every year I have to come in and state what we were awarded as part of the obligations of the grant.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah.
Yes, ma'am.
Next on the list, we have high school athletics NIL, that's by Mr. Alex Grosskroof. And is Mr. Glenn Patterson here, or what's that? Mr. Allison? Okay, all right. That's Name, Image, and Likeness for high school students.
Hey, good evening. It's fun to be on this side of the podium. I'm just coming to you with a brief update on some changes in NIL, which have occurred over the past couple months. So this will go through the timeline of NIL and then some of the current regulations and looking forward to future regulations for NIL. I'm sure you guys are, some of you are familiar with NIL, but for those who are not, NIL stands for Name, Image, and Likeness, and it's kind of taken over college athletics. It has become a major focus of college athletics. And in the simplest terms, it is an agreement between a student athlete and some third party that allows that student athlete to sell their name, image, and likeness. So generally, that's done through things like endorsements, autograph sessions, trading cards, features on social media, NFTs, anything like that. And it allows the athlete to make money off of their image. Previously, for amateur athletics, which high school and college athletics were treated as amateur athletics, that was not permissible. Recently, due to legislative changes, change in culture, and now regulatory changes, NIL is permissible in North Carolina. So to go through the timeline, October 3, 2023, the legislature passed Session Law 2023-133, and that law gave the State Board of Education the mandate to adopt rules which govern student eligibility to participate in interscholastic activities. That was a pretty broad mandate, which meant that the State Board of Education had to figure out what it needed to do. One of the mandates was that they needed to figure out how to handle NIL. So on March 7 of 2024, the State Board voted to adopt temporary NIL rules, which stated that students for the 2024, 2025 year who entered into NIL deals would be deemed ineligible to participate in high school athletics. That was then followed up on June 6 with Policy ATHL008, which became effective on July 1, 2024. That policy basically implemented the March 7 regulations. So soon after that, Faison Brandon, who's one of the top high school recruits in the country, he's quarterback at Grimsley, filed a lawsuit in Wake County saying that he had been prevented from signing an NIL deal as a result of these rules and requesting an injunction, basically asking the judge to stop the implementation of these rules. And on October 1, Judge Graham Shirley issued an injunction preventing both ATHL008 and the rules, the temporary rules by the State Board of Education from taking effect. And in addition to that, in Judge Shirley's order, he attached what was called Exhibit A, which was proposed permanent rules for the 25, 26 school year and said that those rules needed to take effect immediately until the State Board of Education could come up with something substantially similar to those rules for the 24, 25 year. So after that ruling, the State Board of Education began the temporary rulemaking process and published new proposed rules. That was on November 8, 2024. The temporary rules can go through an expedited process to allow them to be adopted more quickly. They had the notice and comment period in December. And then this past week, at the January 8 and January 9 State Board of Education meeting, the State Board of Education voted to adopt those temporary rules and in addition to adopt permanent rules, which begin for the 2025, 2026 school year. These temporary rules will take effect on February 1, 2025, and the permanent rules will begin on July 1, 2025, pending the review of the Rules Review Commission. The temporary rules and the permanent rules are largely the same, but there are some minor differences between the two. We sent you guys a letter, which will hopefully explain some of the differences between those, but I will also go through some of the differences between the temporary rules for this school year and the permanent rules, which will take effect next school year. So the temporary rules, and this slide and the next slide will both show what is the same in all of those. Student athletes can now license their image in the following ways, and all of these are listed out in the regulation. So public appearances or commercials, autograph signings, athletic camps or clinics, NFTs, endorsements of products or services, promotional activities, including in-person or social media, and any other commercial activity which promotes a product or service through the use of a student's name, image, or likeness. When the student wants to sign a contract, they first have to submit that proposed contract to a lot of people. They have to send it to their school's principal, the school's athletic director, the superintendent, the board chair, and the head coach of any sport in which the student participates during the term of the NIL agreement. So that means that if the student is a football player and a baseball player, if they receive the NIL endorsement related to their activities on the football team, but their, you know, the endorsement is a full-year thing, they would have to submit it to both their football and their baseball coach, since that's during the term of the NIL agreement. The school's AD, once they've received a copy of a current NIL agreement, so this is once it has been executed, has to send that to the North Carolina High School Athletics Association within 30 days of the disclosure of the deal. So that is once the deal has been executed, the AD for the school is required to send that to the High School Athletics Association. And lastly, the student must complete NIL education courses that are offered through the NFHS, and if they're under 18, their parents also must do that. And the copies of those certificates must be provided to the High School Athletics Association. And there's also a large amount of things that the students cannot do. Primarily, schools cannot use interathletics, interscholastic, or sorry, the student cannot promote during their athletic event. So if you're playing a game, you cannot use that game to wear a sponsored T-shirt for your NIL deal. That has to be off the field in your private time. It can't be on the field. In their NIL deals, they can't use the PSRC logo. They can't use the logo of their high school. It has to be separated out. They also cannot promote a lot of things that would be bad looks for the district, so an adult establishment, alcohol, tobacco, other drugs, weapons, gambling, or, and this is a broad one, but activities that would disrupt the operations of the school system. So that's one thing that the board may need to think about when looking at policies or that the superintendent may need to consider, is what would fall under that catch-all category of disruptive activities to the operation of the school system. Additionally, coaches, ADs, and employees cannot use NIL to induce a student to transfer to a different school. So your high school football coach at Red Springs can't look at a student at Fairmont High School and tell them that, you know, they'll get a $20,000 contract if they come play at Red Springs. That's not permissible. Additionally, coaches, ADs, school employees, booster club reps, and NIL collective representatives cannot be the athlete's agent or facilitate an NIL agreement between the student and a third party. So your coaches can't be involved in helping their students make a deal. Your ADs, your school employees cannot be involved in helping make a deal between the student and a local business. And these are some changes in the permanent rule. Everything I described would be in the permanent rule, but additionally, when the student proposes the NIL agreement, they have to send that to the district in a complete and unredacted version at least 10 days prior to signing that agreement. So under the current temporary rules, there's no timeline for when the student has to submit the proposed agreement. The permanent rules that will take effect in 2025, 2026 state that it has to be at least 10 days prior to them executing that agreement. So that will give the school system a little more time to figure out what it needs to do and if it needs to do anything for a specific NIL agreement. Additionally, once the agreement is finalized, the finalized agreement needs to be provided, again, in a complete and unredacted form within five business days of it being executed. And that has to be given to all of the school administrators that I mentioned last time. So that's your AD, your board chair, your superintendent, your coaches. All of them need to receive a copy of that, and that's within five business days of its execution. And lastly, the NFHS training that I mentioned needs to be completed at least 10 days prior to entry into an NIL agreement. So the permanent rules largely have added timelines that will make it easier to implement this process and also require that the NIL agreements be provided in a complete and unredacted form, whereas the temporary rules don't require the disclosure to be complete and unredacted. I know that was a lot. I know that was a lot of administrative law that's kind of all over the place because there's two sets of rules that are being determined at the same time, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
All right, I'm sorry. Bradley Phillips, then we're going to have Mr. Terry Lightler.
Hey, I may have two. So I'm just assuming the training would be to outlaw any kind of do's and don'ts to the parent, the student, what they can and can't do?
I would think so. It's one that's been developed by the NFHS for NIL agreements, and I would think it would be substantially similar to the one that's probably used for college athletes right now. But that's not really on the, the district doesn't have to do anything in terms of administering a training. It's just the one that's offered by NFHS. I think it's helped to help students understand what they can and can't do, and then also help save them from potentially signing like an exploitative deal.
And next one, if there's any kind of violations on that, is that all handled separately away from the district? Or is there something that needs to go in policy on that piece as well?
So one of the things that the permanent rules did is that if, for instance, the district denied an NIL agreement for violating one of the terms of NIL, like the regulations, if it, you know, promoted alcohol for some reason, for instance, that could be appealed to NC DPI, and NC DPI would handle that. The High School Athletics Association would also handle some eligibility questions. If a student was deemed ineligible, I think that would be handled. The school district would state that they were ineligible, and it would be handled by the High School Athletics Association. But I think it would depend on the specific issue that arose to figure out who would handle specific appeals or hearing and disciplining and things like that. But part of that will also depend on what board policies are developed by the district to handle NIL.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Terry?
Is this only for high school?
Yes.
It's through the High School Athletics Association. I think that the regulations might, I think they actually define it as seventh grade onwards. So basically, as soon as you're eligible for school athletics, but can't imagine you're going to see many seventh graders signing NIL contracts.
Is the School Board Association working on some draft policies?
I think they are. I think largely, from what I've been able to get, because I've asked around, and I think since it's so new, everyone is trying to figure out what they need to do. But I think the School Boards Association is slowly working on it. I think that largely it would just say comply with the regulations to be deemed eligible. Like I think, from what I've heard, it would largely just restate the regulations.
Do you see any potential areas of concern with NIL, with these types of deals, just in general?
Personally, or is the board attorney?
Either one. I'll take it.
I think that the permanent rules do some things that will help out by adding in the timelines to make the disclosure periods much more obvious and requiring a complete and unredacted version. I think that one thing that occurred in the Faison Brandon lawsuit was that, I can't tell you what's in that deal because they said that it was confidential, and I think that that was probably an attempt by the State Board of Education to handle a situation like that. I think you'll probably, I mean, I'd be guessing at the future on a lot of other things, but I think that transfers may turn into something. I would hope that it doesn't turn into something, but I could see that being an area of concern.
Mr. Chair, two Terry's question. We did check with the School Board Association. They're all working on policies.
All right, no more. Thank you. Appreciate it. Now, I would like to go back, yes. I would like to go back to, call me Dr. Kinda Locklear up here again, and I think we have two guys that want up here earlier for the North Carolina pages before they can get their recognition. Board members, come up to the front.
Thank you, Chairman Leach.
As I said, this, Mr. Roderick Dees, he's a senior at Fairmont High School. He is currently ranked number one in his class. He is also one of our finalists for Gates. He has a GPA of 4.5 and is a member of the Beta Club, National Honor Society, plays varsity basketball cross-country, and he serves as president of ACES Club, so.
We also have Mr. Minkota Smith. He is a senior at Fairmont High School. Has a 3.87 GPA. He's also part of the cross-country team and varsity baseball team. He recently committed to Robinson Community College to play baseball. Minkota is also part of the Beta Club, National Honor Society, and active member of the ACES Club, and he enjoyed meeting those in authority and learning more about our government. So, thank you.
Thank you again, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Williamson, and Board members.
Now, we will have Power School data breach update by Mr. Bobby Locklear.
Good evening again, Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson, Board members. Ms. Jessica Seeley placed a general FAQ for you at your desk today concerning a Power School data breach that occurred late December. We were made aware of that approximately two weeks later, and just wanted to share some very general information with you. So the Power School data breach is nationwide. It has nothing to do with just the state of North Carolina and just our district. The data breach occurred because of access granted because of a third-party vendor. It has been reported by Power School that the data has been destroyed that was retrieved from the system. So the hackers did have access to student information and staff information. So at the current time, this is all the information that we have to be able to share with you. Power School is working to develop a hotline and a call center for individuals that feel that they may be affected by this data breach. But again, this is nationwide. This is not just located here in North Carolina or to the public schools of Robinson County. We just wanted to share this information with you.
Dr. Linda Emmanuel, you got a question?
I just have one question. I don't remember, Mr. Bobby, but are social security numbers on those children in that data?
Based upon the information that was shared with us last night through a webinar, there are 910 students affected with social security numbers across the state of North Carolina. To the best of our knowledge, we do not have any social security numbers of students in our system. But again, what was compromised was probably other personal identifiable information addresses, phone numbers, those sorts of things.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bobby. Next, we have our public comments, and we have on here Mr. Harold Smith. I don't think he's here. All right, let's, let's move on. Next, we have action items, a monthly financial report by Ms. Erica Sessner.
Good evening Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and Board Members. And let me also say thank you very much for your service you provide to boys and girls and staff members of the public schools of Robinson County. I placed at your desk the monthly financial report. I apologize for it not being in your packet. I wanted to ensure that the budget information was included, and it has been. And I can answer any questions anyone has at this time.
John? Then Mr. Terry.
Yes, sir. Has anything changed?
No, sir.
Make a motion to approve?
A motion being made to approve by Mr. John Simmons. Second, then made by Mr. Lyndon May. Mr. Terry, do you got a question? Mr. Terry Littler, got a question?
I was just gonna ask, would it be okay if I recuse myself, because we just received it?
All right, Mr. Terry has recused himself, but we always got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor? All opposed? Eyes got it? All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Melissa?
I move that the Board of Education for the public schools of Robinson County go into closed session for the purposes of discussing certified and classified personnel in North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 2011 A1 and 6, and to consult with their attorney retained by the Board in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the Attorney and the Board of Education for the public schools of Robinson County, North Carolina General Statutes 143 through 318 point 11 A13.
All right. All of, I got a motion to go to closed session by Ms. Melissa Olson. Got a second, go by Mr. Trey Britt, all in favor? All right, let's go to closed session.
Most to come out of closed session by Melissa Ocean. A segment made by Mr. Craig Lyer, all in favor? I've got it. Motion to self personnel as presented. A motion being made by Mrs. John Simms, a self personnel as presented. A second being made by Ms. Melissa Osha, all in favor? All opposed? All right. Motion to self closed session minutes. A motion being made by Ms. Melissa Osha to self closed sessions minutes. A second being made by Ms. Christy, I'm so sorry, by Ms. Christy, all in favor? All opposed? Motion to adjourn. A motion being made by Ms. Melissa Osha to adjourn, a second by Mr. Henry Brewer, all in favor? Meet in the adjourn.